The town of Trumbull special meeting for Thursday, May first. Uh, I think uh, uh. Says pledge of allegiance, so I guess we'll do it, alright?
Yeah.
My pledge allegiance to the flag.
States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh, roll call. I'm here, Commissioner Delechio, Commissioner Cousins, Commissioner Silver, Commissioner Hall, and Commissioner Kroll. So, I'm gonna say, I assume Mr. Kroll is gonna be voting for Mr. Deacon tonight with Mr. Deacon's absence, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. This is a special meeting and it's a regular meeting for those that have tuned in. Uh, we are gonna allow some public comment where, you know, for this application. So it's sixty-six hundred Main Street, applicants, uh, Magliocco, Picarazzi, and Deitch Nero requesting a modification to a special permit to allow rock crushing and processing for onsite use pursuant to Article two, section three point two, and Article nine of the Town of Trumbull zoning regulations filed twenty-five oh eight. So the applicant name and address for the record, and then that's it. I'm gonna ask staff to give us a quick report. Mister Magliocco, name and address for the record. You're on mute.
I reside at forty-nine Harvester Road, Trumbull, Connecticut.
So, uh, Rob, do you have a quick staff report for us before we ask questions?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman. Yes, so this is a special meeting. Uh, in discussion for the application at sixty-six hundred Main Street. This property was recently approved, uh, for a thirteen thousand square foot medical office building. Uh, they are doing some site improvements on the site. Um, previously in that application, uh, they stated that they would not be doing any rock crushing onsite. Uh, due to them doing work on the site, uh, um, they are looking to add rock crushing there as well, too. Um, the rock crushing, um, will, um, as I was told, will be, uh, the rocks will be utilized onsite. Uh, this will reduce the amount of, uh, truck traffic of materials going out of the site substantially. Um, the, uh, applicant, uh, there's further discussion that this commission may wanna have in terms of conditions, in terms of timetable, buffering, and the routes that the trucks are going as well, too. Um, and I'll let the applicant discuss those.
Mister Chairman, if, if I may also, I, I need to put some things on the record for a Zoom meeting, which we've kind of been out of accustomed to doing, so if I could have a minute to do that, I'd appreciate that as well.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. So tonight is a special meeting, as the chairman has said. It's being conducted pursuant to Connecticut law by video conference and teleconference over the internet and the telephone. During the public comment period, which there is tonight because there is a public hearing, the public will be recognized by electronically raising your hand or by dialing star nine if you are, um, on the phone only. And we'll go over those instructions again. The agenda for the meeting was posted, um, on the Trumbull Town website twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting, including any supporting application materials. Please note that posting comments on Facebook Live or any other online format or any chat will not be included in the record, and the commission will not see those comments. I will ask commissioners and participants to remember to please identify yourself before speaking for the benefit of those who are listening only by telephone and to be acknowledged by the chair. Lastly, I would ask the chair to make sure that all votes are conducted by roll call, and tonight's meeting is being recorded. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, and one more thing is that, uh, if everybody could be on mute when you're not talking, that helps with, uh, no feedback. So at this time, I would ask the applicant to give us any, uh, overview presentation that you have for us.
Thanks, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, uh, again, my name is Angelo Magliocco, and I reside at forty-nine Harvester Road, Trumbull, Connecticut. I will be speaking on the behalf of the applicant, which is sixty six hundred Main Street LLC, in which I am a managing member. I will be joined by my colleagues Guido Picarazzi Senior and Guido Picarazzi the third are also members of this LLC. With that being said, I'd like to thank the commission and staff for the special meeting of this planning and zoning commission tonight. Uh, I would like to reiterate what both the staff and commission comments, that the traffic will greatly reduce with the ability to crush onsite. Just so the commissioners are aware, for every fifteen to eighteen yards of aggregate that is brought into the site, a empty, a truck will exit empty, generating two trips. We are hoping that we will be able to save anywhere from six hundred to eight hundred trips with this ability to crush onsite. It is also not our intention to export any materials produced onsite from this operation. Unlike other operations that have been approved in the past in town, we will not be producing five to six different types of aggregate. The equipment that we have chosen is the single drum, single conveyor system that will only produce the size of the stone that is needed for the drainage onsite. A picture of this was provided to staff, so you can see that it's a smaller, smaller, uh, piece of equipment. Again, we appreciate the comments from staff, and my colleagues and I look forward to answering any questions that you may have. In relation occasion again.
Alright, thank you. Can everybody hear me? I know Angelo was going in and out. Can you guys hear me steady? Alright. So I just wanna, from the staff's input and your input, I understand, uh, I mean, we were there. I guess there was no discussion and understanding with the attorney. Not only did you not ask for it the first time, but the attorney actually said negative. He said, we wouldn't be doing it. Uh, whether that was assumption or not, we're here today. So, we are in a situation where I'm described to the difference in the two scenarios, whether if we allow it here or we don't. If we don't allow it, the part of the rock that's already being blasted in a construction site is gonna have to be hauled out. And then you are gonna have to truck back in the fill that you need. So approving the crushing onsite would save, I'm sure, construction time for the project and the delays in the neighborhood, but also take five, six, seven hundred trucks off the road going through Trumbull. Is that correct? Mister Magliocco?
Yeah, yeah, yes, that is correct.
Okay, now, unfortunately, we understand that there are some folks that would are not in favor of it, and I understand it, and we wanna hear from everybody. And on, the reality is, we are dealing with a construction site that is in a commercial zone on a state highway with an approved project. And I understand that, that this will be a little bit of a noise imposition during the day because rocks are gonna get crushed. Uh, but it's temporary, and then hopefully nothing happens in this neighborhood for fifty years, right? So will you have water trucks onsite to help with the spray and the dust and things like that? I know that would be a concern.
Currently, we have a water truck on on site, actually a water trailer onsite, in which we are, uh, wetting down, uh, with calcium the roadway, uh, for those dry days, and, uh, so it's already onsite, to answer your question. We have a watering trailer onsite.
And it will be in use during the crushing operation to help reduce as much as you possibly can the dust that would be created?
Uh, yes, it'll be in use, uh, when we're crushing. Again, this is a single drum, single conveyor, uh, piece of equipment. It's not a conventional crushing, so it's gonna produce a lot less noise and a lot less, uh, you know, moving parts. I'm sure, uh, anybody from Public Works can explain that.
I- i- in my terms, there's bigger, better, faster machines. It can crush more and louder and make more noise, and you have one of the smaller versions that you're using. Is that a simple way to say it?
Yes, we are looking to create one size aggregate.
Yeah, y- yes, it's good. So, uh, now, you are, I wanna try and ask as many questions as I can to help the commissioners and move us along, but you are one hundred percent only crushing for the use of your need, right?
Correct.
You will not be exporting crush off the site?
No, we will not.
And if this was not approved, all the rock that you have to blast would have to be trucked out. And then trucks coming back with fill would also leave empty, right?
Yeah, yes, it would generate double the amount of trips.
So it's anywhere from six, seven, eight hundred trucks. Now, we're talking about, I'm told, a possible two to three week timeframe. I understand you can't commit hard fast, but that's pretty much the window if the machines were up or down or something like that. You know, we wanna say, it's your last day, you, you're, you're done, but that's basically the timeframe?
It is our intentions for eighty to a hundred hours of crushing during normal business hours, not on Saturday.
Right.
You know, we, we can't control breakdowns, that's why it's hard to put a weak period to it.
So your normal business hours would be like eight to five, six, something like that?
Seven to three thirty is usually with the hours we've been working. I think we've we've only worked one or two Saturdays up there.
Okay, so you're done early. Alright, so at this time, I'm gonna go around the room. I'm gonna start with, uh, Commissioner Silver. Mister Magliocco, just go on mute for a second until he asks your question. You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mister Delechio, do you have a question?
I'm just, um, Angelo, what it, the water, um, trailer that you have, you said it, what's, what's in it calcite? Is that something to be concerned about? Is that normal procedure to have, have that in the water that you're using to spray it down?
It's, it's a agent that goes into the water to help control dust. It's a common practice in the construction industry. Uh, and we use it a lot. Uh, I'm sure Rich can, uh, incur with that. It's a common, we use practice.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Mister Delechio?
I don't think so.
Mister Kroll?
It, uh, it was like you took all my questions and asked them.
That's, that's, that's the point. We're trying to get, we're trying to get everybody their answers, right?
No, I don't have any additional questions.
Okay. Uh, Mister Cousins?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, Miss Hall?
Um, thank you, um, Chairman. Um, if you didn't crush, if you weren't able to, what would be the delay in the project?
It, just the amount of the trucking, getting it from location to where we're getting it, uh, it, it would, there would definitely be a delay in the whole entire process, uh. And again, we're trying to be done for, you know, December first, and, uh, just, it does a lot for saving time with, with the crushing and reduce the traffic, which, you know, being on a state highway is always a concern.
I thi- I think she was looking for a number. It could be weeks to a month or two or in delay.
Oh, yeah, 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 absolutely. It could definitely be, yeah, yeah, uh, up to a month.
Okay, alright, alright, uh, that's all the commissioners that are here, right? Okay, uh, so.
Excuse me, Chair, excuse me, Chairman Garrity, um, Commissioner Karaglian is also on.
Yeah, I haven't seen him in a year. I didn't know whether he was here as a member of the public. I didn't remember whether he actually resigned or not. I thought.
Nope, I'm still here. I have no questions.
No question. Alright, thank you. I apologize. I would introduce you at the beginning.
You're good.
Yes, yes, so, uh, alright, so, uh, at this time, I will open it up to the public. If anybody from the public who is dialed in wants to raise their hand, and, uh, you know, I see Mister Infante is here. I assume that you are here to speak. So, uh, the floor is yours with any questions that you may have.
Uh, I was here to clarify things, and just a couple of questions on the setup of the crusher. You say you have a hundred hours of crushing that you anticipate?
Eighty to a hundred hours, yes.
Yep, um.
Mister, Mister Infante, could you just speak for the commission who you are and?
Sure, this is Rich Infante from Department of Public Works for the Town of Trumbull.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Um, there any noise control measures along with that crusher? Or you, do you plan on having that, uh, surrounded by burms to keep the noise down onsite?
Uh, I need to ask a question. Are you here representing Public Works or are you here?
I'm here, yeah, Bill Mauer, yep. We, he was just concerned about the setup onsite of the crusher, uh, just to understand what's gonna get moved in and what was gonna be there.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't hear. My question was, are you here representing the town or yourself as a citizen?
Uh, Town of Trumbull, I was here.
Okay, good.
I require about a couple of questions for the setup of the crusher onsite.
Oh, okay, alright, so we had the staff report, uh, I, I think we're good. Angelo, you good with that question?
Yeah, absolutely. I, uh, so, there is currently a berm, uh, along Broadway, and we also have a lot of the blasting done, so we are, if you have driven by, we are starting to sit lower uh, in the grade over there, uh, you know, probably crush, it's a small crusher, so it's very mobile, probably going to, uh, move it into a couple of different locations. Uh, I'm sure that lower area is, uh, the most, an ideal location to crush, but we do have uh, a berm set up where our office trailers are ready, and with the rest of the blasting, a lot of those cuts, which are up to fifteen to twenty feet, uh, will be, will be below that level, so it's almost a natural berm.
Okay, uh, also, we had a question on the dust control. Um, that's along with that crusher, that has the spray heads on it to control dust in the curtains over the conveyors to try to manage the dust coming from the machine and offsite?
Uh, I have my colleague Guido, uh, do you know that answer, Guido? Well, you're on, uh, you're on this call.
Mister, Mister Brown, if you could bring in, um, it looks like, uh, Phil G. and Guido into the meeting, please. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me? This is Guido.
Yep, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Guido Picarazzi, um, twenty-four Hawks Ridge Drive in Shelton.
Okay, did you hear the answers about the, the covering and the spray nozzle?
Yeah, so the, w- we will have dust mitigation control on the conveyors. There's, there's spareheads.
Okay, thank you. Mister Infante, you all set?
Yep, that's what's my questions.
Alright, so, uh, now, Phil G. has a hand raised. I don't know if that's on purpose.
That's not, Phil. Phil on our development team, he's not on this call. That's, uh, that could be the neighbor.
Alright, so at this time, we will take, uh, any questions from the public. Uh, uh, Mister Cordon or Mister, who, who's in charge of bringing them in? I don't see it.
Uh, Mister, Mister Brown is, but I can coordinate, so right now I think we have Attorney Bellis had raised his hand, so.
Yeah, I can't see the list of names.
Yeah, that's okay. We'll, we'll work it. Uh, if, if you could bring Attorney Bellis, and then, um, Phil G. could be next. Thank you, Mister Brown. Attorney Bellis, if you can hear us, you can, um, address the commission.
Okay. I don't know if you can hear or see me, um.
We can, we can't see you, but we can hear you. Just name and address for the record.
Okay, um, my name is Attorney Stephen Bellis. Um, I'm with the Pellegrino Law Firm at four seventy-five Whitney Avenue, uh, New Haven, Connecticut. And, uh, I represent Angelo and Catherine DiCrotolo, who are budding property owners at one fifty-one Broadway. Uh, I should point out that, um, when this application came about, uh, Angelo, uh, DiCrotolo supported the application for the, uh, medical facility. Um, but he did so, I believe, based on some representations that were made um, by the applicant's attorney and, and in response to staff, Rob Lebrandy's questions. The first would be that there would be no rock crushing taking place on the site. Um, now that is changing. The second, that the trucks would only be using Route twenty-five. It's my understanding that the trucks are using, uh, Broadway to get to Whitney, and they're not only using Route twenty-five. And then the third thing, that there would be a water truck to help with the dust control, and having one there and using it are two different things. Apparently, I'm told that it's not being used or not being sufficiently used to protect dust. Um, so that, um, there have been a lot of concerns and problems, not only with my clients, but with their surrounding neighbors. Um, they've signed a petition, and I think I handed it in to, uh, to, uh, Rob. Maybe, maybe there were sixty-eight people that signed it that were against this rock crushing operation. Um, from a legal standpoint, uh, if I can address that for a minute, under Article nine, um, uh, of, of the Trumbull regulations, uh, obviously, you can have a rock crushing in an industrial zone. Um, but, um, if it's not, and that, and that, that is a permitted use, but this is not an industrial zone, um, although the zone was changed, it was not changed to an industrial zone. So the second exception would be under, uh, Article, under the, uh, s- section five of the standards of Article nine. And it says that you can have crushing, but it says unless approved as part of the special permit uh, process, uh, in accordance with this article. Clearly, um, when this, um, uh, special permit was submitted back in twenty twenty-four, it was not part of the, uh, special permit. So legally speaking, there's no basis in law under your regulations to allow this because it wasn't brought up as part of the application in the first place. Um, so with having said that, I don't think that, um, there's, uh, there's been, uh, there's a legal basis for doing it. And secondly, uh, I think that my client, as well as some of the neighbors, are concerned that representations have been made in the past, and, um, that those representations are, are different now. Um, I understand, obviously, the arguments for the developer, um, but I think that, uh, I, I strongly disagree that it would be a delay of a month. Uh, I don't think it's gonna delay his project. You can order, uh, material, uh, to be brought onsite, and you can, at the same time, for, be removing it, so, um, I take, I take exception with those facts. Um, the bottom line is, these neighbors, um, have, uh, as I said, or at least my clients, you know, were, are not, you know, just simply saying no, and they would like to see their project done. They just were relying on the fact that they were gonna have a summer without rock crushing. So I think that that's, that's their concern.
Thank you, appreciate it. All set?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Mister Brown or Mister Cordon, we have any other hands raised? I see a Phil G. with a hands raised. Mister Bellis, can you go back on mute, please?
Yeah, I will try. I was on.
Okay, so Phil G., if you're there, you, uh, name an address for the record, please, and if you have a camera, I can go on, please.
Uh, um, you know what? I use Microsoft Teams all the time. Can you folks hear me, number one?
Yes.
Number two, can you see me?
No.
My camera's on, and I know when I went out to the meeting, I could see my camera.
Okay, go ahead. Name and address for the record.
Yeah, that's fine. So Fred, my name is Phil Georges. I live at one seventeen Broadway Road.
Okay.
Now, we realize that this has been a significant project, right? And it is directly affecting all of the neighbors, including myself, which is directly behind where all this operation's been happening, number one. Number two is, they did not ask for a rock crushing op- operation when they submitted the application, which was probably one of the basis that the approvals went through, number two. Number three is, I get the fact that Angelo and his team, and then, by the way, Angelo's been very good. It's been very accommodating, but what I would say is that this has been a significant impact to myself personally and professionally. I'm sitting in my office right now, and if you could see my video, I'm directly facing the location, which with, the berm is with about thirty feet from my window, and where the rock crushing would be is about a hundred feet. I am on a professional sales calls all day long, on video and on audio, which directly affects my ability to conduct my job effectively. So I'm talking about all the noise pollution. Number two is, I can't even open my windows at all during business operations that the site is conducting work to get any kind of airflow within my house. So I'm secluded within my house. I can't hear, and I can't open windows for any fresh air. Second thing is, in addition to all this is, this rock crushing operation, we had it for two years over where Echo is, and now it would be within a hundred and fifty feet of my house. Rob Lebrando and others came on my site to see exactly how physically close to my residence that this operation would be. So unless there's significant stipulations, which I wanna state, that can manage what they're asking for in rock crushing operations, I've already submitted a detailed response in email to the town, including pictures, because I oppose what's actually what they're asking for to try to do this. There's a natural westerly wind coming off the site, coming directly at my house. So I'm personally impacted by this. Everybody on the phone, listen, I've been a taxpayer in Trumbull for thirty years. I don't deserve to have to be treated to the fact of, ah, it's not a big deal, it's a commercial site, it'll be done in a few months. Adding a rock crushing operation is going to impact me personally and professionally, and this needs to be taken note by the town when you're considering approving or denying this application. Now, I'm gonna take a step forward, Fred and team. If you're considering this, right, and, and Angelo says eighty-one to one hundred hours, if the town is considering, I would ask that it be time boxed specifically in to a set date, start and end, and no more that exceeds that, number one. Number two is, I would actually ask to confirm and actually be present that there is water that's being added to the rock crushing operation to reduce the dust, because, again, I can't even open the windows on my house. Third, I would also ask that that rock crushing operation be done Monday through Friday, 'cause it's not fair for me as a resident and taxpaying citizen of this town on Saturday morning at seven o'clock in the morning to hear drilling and or rock crushing that affects my personal time on my weekends. So, as you consider the impact to the neighborhood, to me personally, it's been significant. And while Guido and Angelo have been accommodating, they've put up a berm, I would ask that the plantings also be done on the berm bordering my property to reduce and minimize the dust and noise coming in, 'cause it's significant. So this isn't trivial, team, that it's been happening to me personally. It affects me every single day of my life. It affects my job to be executed and done professionally and effectively. So when you're considering a rock crushing operation, this isn't like, oh, guys, that'll be nice. This is within a hundred and fifty feet of my house, not of my property, of my house. So I'd act, ask you to carefully consider, A, either approving, and B, if you are with some specific stipulations on date, amount of hours, and control of both noise and dust that's occurring on the site. And the last thing we're gonna mention is, the trucks are not going down Main Street as they're exiting the property. They're exiting, they're taking a left on Whitney, and they're taking a left on Broadway. So you could say it's a reduction in, in site traffic, but let me tell you something, it's coming up and down my road. So not only is it affecting me on my westerly side, it's affecting me on my easterly side. So I'm surrounded by the impact of this construction site. So I'm asking the town to seriously consider the impact to the residents and taxpaying citizen for thirty years, what the impact is by this job overall, and what this ask is of this application.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I think there's one other person, right, maybe, with their hand up? Is it, uh, is there a Joanne O. can be brought in?
Mister Brown, if you could move, um, Mister Georges, Phil G., and Attorney Bellis back to the public, uh, session, please, thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, name and address for the record?
Yes, uh, my name is Sal Arena, and my wife, Joanne Orm. Uh, we're at four four two Pitkin Hollow in the Governor's Ridge complex.
Okay.
Um, I'm speaking on behalf of many of the uni- of unit owners here. We have approximately a hundred and five unit owners in our community. And, um, we act, we put a petition together, um, gaining approx- over thirty signatures in a very short period of time, because we found out about this meeting quite late, unfortunately. But the main issue for our community, who has, you know, elderly, children, adults of all different ages, um, is the control of the silica dust, uh, during the construction. And OSHA will, will.
And OSHA will will, and they have write-ups on this about that the rubble can generate a respirable crystalline silica dust, which when inhaled could cause irreversible damage to the lungs. Um, we probably would have gotten one hundred percent of everyone signing this petition from our complex had we had more time, but I'm sure this represents our position on this. So we are very concerned about this dust going into the atmosphere and then landing within the surroundings of our community here. Uh, especially since this was approved, knowing that the rock um, crushing was going to be done off of site. That's how it got, you know, approved. That's the way it should be going forward. You know, if if other things have changed in the, you know, to to change that, um, I'm sorry about that, but the health of our community is should be the most important thing to the construction team, to the committee, and to all of us. So we're advocating that this rock crushing gets done off of site regardless of the additional truck traffic um, for our health concerns. And I I do have a question to bring up to the construction team. Um, is blasting still continuing at this point, or is all the blasting done?
Uh, staff can answer. I don't think it's completed at this point. I think it's still going on.
Okay, and and the reason why I ask that is, we were at the original meeting, um, you know, late last year when when this got approved.
Right.
And our understanding from that meeting, if I my notes are correct, is that the um, blasting was only supposed to be for a fairly short period of time, weeks.
Yeah, I I think if you if you are a fan of the news in Trumbull, there's some people drove by an old schoolhouse and had some interest in it. It caused a little bit of a delay. So.
Right, the my I I I understand that, but the the point I'm making is if what was originally deemed to be only a few week process.
Right.
And now it's turned out to be months. Um, when we hear that this, you know, that this is only going to be a a few weeks of rock crushing.
So I you'll you'll hear.
How do we, excuse me, how do we believe that?
Well, uh, you'll hear that in my summation, but just briefly, they have to commit, and when they are, is to a volume of their need, and the volume of the need has a production timeframe, and that should have a cap of how long it takes. If there are political delays, if there are machinery delays, that timeframe could extend, but it's not going to extend the amount of crushing they're going to do. That's why putting a timeframe cap is a little difficult. A volume cap that they are projecting what their need is, is what they've offered and staff is verifying, and that's what we're going to go forward with. So it is what you're asking for, but it's practical with complying with their need and their request, okay?
Okay, can I ask then just the position of the committee regarding the um, the damage to the lungs from the silicon, from the silica dust?
That's outside our purview. We're not experts on that.
So how 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 do you, though, maintain the health of your community here in Trumbull? Again, representing at least a hundred and four units.
Well, I I'm going to stop you because this really isn't a Q and A session. It's for you to give us your opinion. But I will answer that one last question, which is, the town has staff, Public Works, Engineering, Fire Marshals. They all have a role in inspections and verification and licensing and certifications, which they all follow in every project, including this one. Okay, as you can see, we have a representative from Public Works here. So uh, your concerns are valid, and they are taken care of by the staff at Town Hall, and that's their job. So we're we're comfortable with that.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. All right. Any more hands in the air? Is anybody seeing Mister Cordone, anybody? Okay. All right, so I'll let the applicant, if he wants to come back with any final statement.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, just wanted to reiterate that this is a new special permit that we are going for tonight. And uh, not to go back in time, but we were always very sensitive of the neighbors and the previous development next to us that had caused some, as uh, Phil had said, two years of of crushing. And I think we were really just trying to uh, be a good neighbor and help everyone. And now that a traffic concern has arisen, uh, we felt that this is a good middle ground. We could definitely keep it to eighty to a hundred hours and not rush on Saturdays. Uh, we, as my colleagues have said.
Can I ask a question, Mister Magalab? In a perfect world, if you were able to rush every day, Monday through Friday, you are likely done within a month.
Do we? Yeah, 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 guaranteed within a month.
Yeah, wait, probably less than, but like I said, between machinery and things and hot whatever.
Like this upcoming week, we're going to have three inches of rain Monday through Wednesday. We wouldn't be crushing on those days. You know, a a a light drizzle would be great for the crushing, but we do have the misters. Uh, and when it is dry and there's red flag warnings out there, it is almost impossible to complete all the dust. So we are watering daily. Uh, we especially on top of the site and uh, we're we're doing our best.
I just want to make sure to uh, commissioners have no last questions before we motion to close the hearing. And just as Attorney Bella said before, the uh, petition with those letters that were against the project have been submitted for the record. Okay, so at this time, I will take a motion to close the meeting. Somebody's got to raise their hand to talk.
This is Karen.
The public hearing.
And Mister Silver, okay, the public hearing is now closed. The only people who can speak are staff and voting commissioners.
Do I, I'm sorry, Mister Chairman, do we vote on the motion to close the hearing?
Oh, all those in favor, uh, we, you know.
Why?
We have to do a voice vote. Delvecchio?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Myself, yes. That's unanimous. Okay. All right, so we are now, I will take, for my synopsis, I will take a motion to uh, approve for discussion here. Somebody has to say it out loud.
Uh, this is Karen. I'll make a motion.
Okay. And seconded by Mister Silver. Thank you. Discussion. I'll just open up with a couple things. So the applicant has already said they're not going to crush on Saturdays. Well, let's go back a little bit. So we all stated, they clearly said in their hearing that they weren't going to crush, and it changed, and they're here. But that's what the process is for. Uh, Attorney Bellis brought up, we don't have the authority. I don't think that that's valid. Mister Cordone has vetted that. Mister Cordone, it's legal for us to amend the initial application, correct? That's why we're here?
Correct. This this is the process. It's a you're they're back before you per our regulations to revise a special permit to include this activity.
Great, okay. I understand. Thank you. So one of the neighbors asked that he wanted to be on site to verify the water. That will never be something that we would consider. This is a private operation and private property. We have town staff for that purpose. Anybody who's friendly with people and gets an invitation, that's great, but there will be no requirements for neighbors to be on site for inspection duty. Uh, the roadway and the trucks, one of the things that we're talking about here is uh, you know, to me, the strongest factor is the elimination of five or six hundred trucks from that area within a month-long period. That is a tremendous amount of volume that, you know, I understand the noise implication, but you know, everybody's opinion counts. Everything everybody said is valid. There is just some disruption to everyone's life who's living near this, and we understand it. We wish it could be a perfect quiet world. But it is a construction project, and it is on a state highway in a commercial zone. So one of the things that I would offer the commissioners is I think we should put a stipulation in here if we're going to pass this, that I'm not talking, I wouldn't say that they should put their uh, uh, their plantings in on the berm, but I would ask them to put up one of those temporary orange construction fencing on top of the berm in the back to also help with some of the low-level dust that might come over. So they can make the berm even a little higher with some of that temporary fencing across the back. I think that might be a a good way to uh, help the neighbors with their ask, right? So uh, at this time, if any other commissioners want to say anything before we call a vote, I'll just go around. Mister Delvecchio?
Um, no, I think I agree with you, Fred, about just doing everything you can to mitigate that um.
Yeah.
The and and I agree with you on having additional trucks coming in and out. That's not healthy either. It's not good for our roads. It's not good for our health. And anything that, um, if there's anything you could do to alleviate some of the noise, I don't know if it's possible.
I think I think one of the things I liked is that they picked, you know, the medium to smaller machine that only does a single size. They didn't get the big, huge, push a different button, get different sized rocks and, you know. So it's going to make noise, but it's not what it it could be if they had a different operation. Okay, Mister Silver?
Nothing right now.
Okay, Mister Crowe?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mister Cousins?
Um, at the meeting, the minutes of that meeting last year are not in front of me, but I think somebody in the public comments suggested this. We had passed this initially with the condition that there would be no rock crushing, which is different from us just not talking about rock crushing at all. Um, was that correct what we heard in public comment, or is that a misinterpretation?
Staff went back, we I asked staff to go back, and their attorney did state for the record, there will be no rock crushing. That's why.
Okay. But that was not a condition of approval that there would be no, it was just, okay, makes sense to me.
Whatever miscommunication between the applicant and their own attorney, that's their issue. They're here because they need to be here, and they need the permission to move forward. And it's our job to make the decision whether five hundred more trucks or not allowing the change, you know, that's up to us.
Sure, thank you.
Uh, uh, okay, I think we're good. That's all five commissioners. Uh, I will, I will take uh, an amendment to the original motion that the applicant add as high a temporary fence as he can across the back property on the berm to help with the dust. We're not going to make them put plantings in now, but they can put some additional temporary fencing in coordination with Mister LeBrandy and Public Works to see what makes sense and what they can do, all right? Any anybody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Second.
Okay, all right. Uh, all in favor of amending the original motion, Mister Delvecchio? Yes or no?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Mister Silver, yes or no?
Yes.
Mister Cousins, yes or no?
Yes.
Mister Crowe, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, so the original motion to approve has been amended to add a temporary fence in the back to help with some of the dust. All right, now, any further questions? If not, or comments, I will take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment as amended, Mister Cousins, yes or no?
Yes.
Mister Delvecchio, yes or no?
Yes.
Mister Crowe, yes or no?
Yes.
Mister Silver, yes or no?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Okay, it's passed, and uh, you know, I I hope that the applicant continues to work with the town and Mister LeBrandy and Public Works will work with them on whatever fencing we could possibly get up on that back berm in a temporary situation, okay? Uh, at this time, I will take a verbal motion to close the meeting.
I make a motion to close the meeting. This is Karen.
Is there a second?
Tony Silver, yes.
All those in favor, Mister Cousins?
Yes.
Mister Delvecchio?
Yes.
Mister Crowe?
Yes.
Mister Silver?
Yes.
And I am a yes. I thank everybody, and I do thank everybody from the public for their input because we took some of it, and we did the best that we could. Everybody have a great night.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care now.